Everyone, welcome to the LTD work session or the Board of Directors. It is August 4th. As Emily was saying, how the heck is it August already? Welcome to the meeting. We are planning to meet from 3:30 to 5:00. I do have a hard stop at 5:00, so I will make sure to keep us on track today in accordance to the agenda. And my computer froze. Thank goodness. I hope I remember what to do. Okay, let's start with roll call. Don Norton.
Here.
Thank you, Don. Haircut's looking great. Emily C. Cord. Michelle Weber.
Here.
Thanks. And then Susan Cox.
Here.
Awesome. Thank you all for being here today. And I'm, my computer's still loading. I'm assuming everything's the same and it's probably comments from the board president. Is that right? Okay. This is testing my memorization skills. So I just already mentioned about staying on topic today and making sure that we're staying within our given time or allotted time for agenda items. But I do want to go ahead and open the floor up for AJ for comments from the general manager.
Yes, President Vargas, I do want to announce that this is my last public meeting with LTD as a general manager. So we do, we are regular board meeting for August is canceled. So given that, I did want to say that as I move on next month to my new job, I will be the Vice President of Market Lead for the Northwest and Pacific for WSP. And the company will make a formal announcement on their end and their appropriate news releases. But I definitely want to leave that to them to do all their official notification. Exciting opportunity and I will stay in the community, probably travel a lot to a lot of great places. But really looking forward to supporting the transit industry on a more national basis. But just wanted to make that announcement. I know I probably have spoken to a few of you already about that and to our employees and a few community members. But been waiting for the company to officially prepare their news release. And I believe that will be coming out in the next few weeks. But I wanted to definitely announce this here to the board. So that is my announcement for today. And now back to LTD's regular business.
Well, thank you, AJ. I know when you announced your resignation, you know, we all just wanted to share our appreciation of the work that you've done at LTD. And also as you continue to make this a smooth transition with your departure, do any board members wish to address AJ?
Just wanted to say thank you, AJ, and I'm looking forward to having a departing coffee with you next week. So thanks for making the time and we just really appreciate all the work that you've done.
Yes, I appreciate your work you've been doing, AJ, and sorry to see you go. I hope that we're able to follow on the work you've done here.
Thank you, Don, and I will make that trip out to Cottage Grove. So we'll do our usual walk. So don't worry.
The river's still running.
AJ, I regret that we've never actually had an opportunity to meet outside of Zoom. So since you're staying in the community, maybe that can still happen. So best wishes to you.
AJ, congratulations on your new opportunity. I know it's an exciting new adventure for you and I'm just excited for you and wish you the best of luck. And thank you for all you've done for LTD. All said, everyone, thank you for sharing. And AJ, we're so glad you're still going to stay in this community and we can still see you and we can run into each other safely and not talk LTD business, right?
We're starting to talk LTD business.
Well, great. Well, thanks for that, everyone. I want to move on and let's look at announcements and additions to the agenda. So I don't have anything to add, but are there any announcements from any board members?
Elin, I just want to express that I have, I would like to follow up with an issue that has been troubling me actually quite a bit. And that was that the LTD General Counsel was terminated by the general manager and a new general counsel was hired. And this was really without full board involvement and without an RFP. And I'm hoping, or I actually request that this be on the agenda at a future meeting.
Let me turn to Mark and get his way in on this because I'm not totally sure. Susan, let me ask you, let me clarify, just a question. What outcome are you looking for out of that discussion or that agenda?
I would like just a review of how it happened. With that, I mean, I'd like to understand, does this mean that this process doesn't require an RFP when other processes do? That it happens so quickly? I don't feel like I have any sense of all, at all, of the new general manager or excuse me, the new general counsel. And because of our fiduciary responsibility as a board, it's important to me to just have more information.
I can provide that something, Caitlin, that may help the conversation.
Yeah, that's fine. And I want to make sure, you know, I'm looking at Mark and AJ, the both of you. Is this the appropriate time in the agenda where we would be discussing what we're talking about right now?
I'm not suggesting that we discuss it now. I'm suggesting that it be the subject of a future meeting. I realize that there are a lot of other agenda items. I just wanted to make clear that it's something that needs to be addressed from my perspective at a future board meeting.
I understand that. I guess I was saying, is it more appropriate for you to approach the board president and ask for that topic to be on agenda? Or do you use this time in a board meeting that's set aside for announcements to request this? And so I'm just getting, I'm just asking for those clarifying points. If AJ, Mark, you have feedback.
I can, I can help out. Susan, I think that today we have an item on the agenda about delegated authority. And when we get to that item, it will be covered by the Director, Kalina Beer. I think that that will help out a lot more because this is much more of a procurement and contract management. So know that there may be an opportunity to, at today's meeting, to discuss the general manager's level of authority on contracts. So I think we have a good resolution and if at the end of that agenda item, you don't have a good answer, maybe the board president, you can discuss placing it at a future agenda as you've asked. But maybe today there'll be some clarification.
Okay, I look forward to that, but still I think of that as separate from the request that I've made. So.
Mark, is there anything you want to add to that? Oh, you're on mute, Mark.
Sorry. No, I don't think so. If it's a procurement question and how we procure services, Kalina will be here and help with that conversation. If it's a conversation of, you know, how things happen and why they happen, then that's a different conversation and should be put on a later agenda if we need it.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Does anyone have any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, AJ, you are up first on the agenda.
Yes, so today I bring before you the, for the board consideration, the appointment of an interim general manager. As I indicated, I am resigning effective September 7. And this board, as a governing body, needs a person as your one and sole employee. So the board, all employees report to a general manager. And I know the board and in a later agenda will discuss the recruitment or kind of what the process the board would like for that. But in the meantime, my recommendation today is to appoint Mark Johnson, who is the current Assistant General Manager and has been with the agency almost 25 years. And in the documents, I provided a little bit about his background. But during this agenda item, I think it's a good opportunity. Should you have any questions about my recommendation for us to discuss that? And also should you have any questions about Mark? It may also be appropriate to ask that. But the recommendation today is interim. So the board can discuss a permanent situation, but it just ensures the continuous management of the district for, you know, its day to day. So that is my recommendation before you today. I believe there is a motion that is included and recommended in your pocket should you want to do that or have discussion or have any questions for me.
I just have one question. I'm in general in favor of this appointment. So thank you, AJ, for bringing it before us for consideration. Is there a timeframe? I just want to make sure interim doesn't mean a specific timeframe or a deadline. Do we have a sense of, Mark, we don't want to assume that you're available indefinitely. Is there a timeline that we should be aware of for this, just for making sure our streamlined approach for our interviewing process going forward is a little more clear for all of us?
Yeah, and I can probably provide some clarification on that. So I'm not interested in the permanent position. You know, I really had planned on retiring at some point and I'm looking at probably the end of next year. So that gives a year and a half, you know, so the board doesn't have to rush into a permanent replacement. They can be thoughtful about it. It may be useful to get new board members on or, you know, however the board decides to do it is fine with me. I'm here to, you know, serve the district and serve the board in, you know, an interim basis for as long as necessary. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Great question, Emily. Any other questions? Well, if there's no questions or discussion, we can move to a motion.
I move the adoption of LTD Resolution 2021-08-04-040 as follows, and I guess we all have that written there. I could read it.
I think we're okay, Don. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I do have a question before we go to the roll call vote.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just have to get back to the budget because that's always my, you know, line of questioning. How does that interim position affect our budget and/or is that something that we're going to work out in the coming days?
I can answer that. The resolution, as it's written, it could be amended, but you do have a motion at this point. How that would affect that is you are authorizing the board presidents since to negotiate that with Mark so that there's an opportunity to look at what the budget is, what the current cost of the general manager is and how that impacts the budget. So that may be something you may want to talk with Caitlin, that that's an important factor for this board or add it as a motion. I'll leave that to you guys. But I believe there is a motion. I don't believe there's a second.
Yeah, there is a bullet point in there and I did second it.
Well, I'd like a little further discussion. In the motion, it says the interim general manager is directed to initiate services of transpo. And at the last meeting, I had requested we have two, or at least we have a choice. And the last time we used KL2 connects and they were, you know, also familiar with our organization. So I don't know if we want to accept that at this time of contracting and hiring transpo or consider.
Don, I'm going to pause you because that's actually our next agenda item.
Well, it's part of this, part of this particular resolution included that. So I thought it needed to be discussed.
Okay.
And I believe if that's something the board would like to hold to the next agenda item, it may be appropriate to kill this motion and make an amended motion to indicate with the removal of that statement that you've not, so that's appropriate to do that. And then so that if that's the case, what would happen is you'd kill this motion and make a new motion saying, I, you know, move to amend the motion to remove the hiring of Transpro and so forth. And then you can get a second again.
I guess I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Can I just ask a clarifying question? Because if I read that bullet point, it says that we will initiate the services of Transpro to help us develop the goals and responsibilities for the interim general manager. It doesn't speak to the hiring process for the general manager in the way I'm reading it. So I just want to make sure we're, we're really looking at what the bullet point is, is saying before we decide.
Michelle, that's how I interpret it. That's how I interpret that bullet point as well.
Okay.
And that is the firm that, under my contract, Transpro was already working on my performance. So that would mean that dollars would just go into this. But again, the board does not have to agree with that.
Yeah, I don't think this one dictates the next one per se, Don. So I think that was a really good point of clarification. Thanks for pointing.
I appreciate the discussion and I don't want to pursue this any further. I think we have an agreement on, or at least an understanding among us what will happen next. I can accept the proposed resolution as it is, or we can amend it. But if we all accept it under that light, I'm playing with that.
And Caitlin, sorry to belabor this, but the previous bullet point, are you comfortable having that level of authority to negotiate and execute the contract with Mark? Or is that something you plan on getting a committee's input on? How do you see that working? And then I will be quiet.
No, these are all great questions and always please feel free to ask anything and have your input. I do feel comfortable with that and I didn't have a problem with that. But I'm always happy to hear feedback. And if you guys do want to amend the motion in any ways, like we could absolutely move forward however you're comfortable. Michelle, Susan, do you have any thoughts?
I, I mean, I think clarifying the role of Transpro is helpful. And since they've been working on the strategic plan, I think it makes a lot of sense for them to be, carry forward with the roles and responsibilities of the interim. So I support it as written.
Thank you, Susan. Michelle, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I support the motion as written as well.
Don and Emily, are you, are you feeling the same? You support it as written or would you like to do an amendment?
No, I feel you can call for a vote.
Okay.
Okay. So just as a reminder, Don made the motion. Emily provided the second. So we'll do a roll call vote. Emily C. Cord. She is nodding. That's yes. Michelle Weber.
Hi.
Thank you, Michelle. Don.
Hi.
Don and Susan.
Hi.
Great. And I also though hi. So that passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that. So let's move on to our next agenda item. Which we already mentioned, and I'm actually going to start this off really quick by echoing what Susan said. So for the general manager recruitment process, I did want to hear from this board and we can have a discussion. My recommendation is that we use a firm to help us with the general manager recruitment process. My recommendation is to look at Transpro since they are, since we just worked with them for the strategic planning process and they're very familiar with what LTD's mission and values are and how we need to be moving forward. However, I know another option is RFP instead of a sole source. So I'd love to hear from board members, your thoughts about the general manager recruitment process. And if you feel more towards Transpro or you'd like to do RFP process.
And I can give you a general idea of the cost of a recruiting firm if that'd be helpful. I mean, it'll be somewhere between $25,000 and $40,000 most likely.
I guess, Mark, are you comfortable, since it's below the budget, that you'd be comfortable with it being Transpro or would you prefer to have an RFP?
I think with Transpro, you know, they've got a head start and have been working with this. So I seen some value that in that. And also we've got some money left in is a current contract that we can actually will be a credit in anything else he does. So I think the price will be favorable also. So I think that would be beneficial.
Thank you, Mark. Good question, Susan.
Hey, Don, I didn't have any experience with the previous firm that you had mentioned earlier. Was there something that really stood out to you for them or were you just thinking of more of just keeping it fair for that, you know, sort of general proposal, request for proposal we've been mentioning?
I think that's correct, what you just said. I had, you know, experience with the KL2 connects because I was still on the board when we hired AJ. And so I had to familiar with those people and that process. But generally, all of the other personnel have moved on since then. So they are familiar with our agency in general, but Transpro is more familiar with the people in place right now. So I don't feel strongly that we should have an RFP out. But as you suggested, I felt it would be more fair to the other agencies who want to do this, that give them a shot at it.
And one more thing too, depending on your timeline, we have time to do an RFP. So if that's the, you know, preference of the board, you know, we have time to do it. And so you just don't, you know, think we have to really rush into anything either. So.
Do you guys, I'm sorry, I just don't recall. Do you feel like in our initial RFP with Transpro that we covered, something like a search or do we feel like we just did more of a performance evaluation, et cetera? I just, I want to make sure that we move forward appropriately.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a new contract. It's not part of the current scope of work.
Okay, thank you.
So Mark, in working with Transpro, part of their organization may be a totally different set of personnel working on this. It wouldn't necessarily be the same people working on the strategic business plan or the evaluation of our GM.
It would not be, other than Mark as the principal. He's got kind of an arm of his business that just does recruiting.
I'm really comfortable with the professionalism and the work that Transpro has done so far. I would anticipate that any work that comes from there would be of the same caliber. So I, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward with Transpro, but I also want to appreciate any other concerns that board members have about the RFP process. Thank you, Michelle. Absolutely. Emily, any more thoughts?
No, I said earlier, I prefer the RFP, but again, I'm not kind of standing in the way.
Okay. So today we're not needing to approve or adopt anything. We're having a discussion. So I guess I just want to get a temperature reading. So Don, sounds like he's leaning towards the RFP. Michelle feels comfortable with Transpro and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're also feeling comfortable with Transpro. And then Emily, you're a little harder to nail down. So let me know your, your.
I think I lean with Don. I want to make sure that we go through the appropriate RFP process if necessary. If we find that our initial RFP does feel appropriate to cover this additional line item, then I would feel comfortable moving forward without it. It's just, I want to make sure everybody has a fair shot at this and not just somebody that we've already worked with for the sake of convenience.
Okay. AJ, Mark, can you give me feedback on this as we move forward? Is this something where we would be looking at board majority, what their preferences? Or what's, what's the right way to move forward?
I can provide some. If, this is really, this is really a small contract. So the general manager will be able to hire this without having to come. One of the values of bringing this discussion to the board is this is really an opportunity for a contract that you guys are really working with, right? The person. You guys have to have a comfort level that this firm is helping you and understands. Although Mark would be hiring him, the firms, they're professional. They know exactly that they're actually helping you in seeking your next general manager. My recommendation would be, I think Don and Celia Cooper Smith is the other firm. She's amazing and outstanding. And by the way, you guys would like her very much. Or I have various other firms that we've worked with in my past that are great. And this is what they do. Probably the pros right now you have with Transpro is that you all have the same experience with the same person. They've kind of have seen the needs of the organizations. You're not spending hours and hours trying to bring them up to speed as a board or concern. So that's an advantage. And you also have two board members missing right now that you guys would be supporting onboard, helping to get on. So I think it's a small contract. We can, even with the small contract, what we would do is we still get quotes and make sure that the cost is fair and reasonable. Because we're required as a public agency and we get audited to ensure that we, you know, make sure we don't just write checks. Everything has to be substantiated and reported and audited. So my recommendation would be unless you're opposed, if this board today said we're opposed to giving this to one company, then my recommendation is that Mark would probably just go out, hire somebody and maybe have a committee, a committee that, from this board that helps interview, which again is time consuming for such a small contract for you guys. So that is the pros and cons of it. So I would say it's getting a consensus. We don't need an action. If there's a consensus from this board that you're not opposed to Transpro, I would say it's probably a relationship you've all already established. And it's a known commodity to LTDs in this moment in time, right? Because that's what matters. It's not that we know the person is, are. in this moment in time, right, because that's what matters, it's not that we know the person is, are they up to speed in this moment in time to help this board choose, as most boards will say, this is the most important and hardest decision you're ever going to make, is who you turn the keys over to this organization. It's, so just my two cents, you don't need to vote or anything, but maybe you can get a thumbs up and down, does, is anybody opposed to going with that firm?
No.
If you're not opposed, that would just would make it easier for all of you, and yeah, would be my recommendation. And then, okay, and then the next question you guys would say is the timeline, because we would want to tell the firm. You know, if you guys would want to start a recruitment. Maybe I know there's gonna point, you have two vacancies. We can find that out, and maybe once that's found out with that timeline, that could help set your timeline as well.
AJ, I think the goal was to start the search process in late twenty twenty-one. We ideally would like to fill those vacancies and bring along those board members during this process.
Perfect.
So we can really hear all voices, but, so in the interest of, we'll have to hear from Kalina in a few minutes. It sounds like since no one is opposed, and we have three board members who feel very comfortable moving forward, Transpro, that that's what we'll be doing at this time. Okay. Great, well, thank you for that discussion and that feedback, everybody. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the procurement policy revision amendment to public contracting authority, and we're going to be hearing from Kalina. We will have the opportunity to discuss this, and then we'll be looking for approval. So Kalina, welcome.
I actually have Wendy here today.
I'm so sorry about that, welcome Wendy.
No problem, I just got her pulled over, we'll give her just a second for her audio.
I should be set now, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Wendy.
Okay, thank you, I did not know I was presenting, so my apologies on that. So basically, what we'd like to bring to you guys today are some changes to our procurement policy. Back in twenty eighteen, and then again, now in twenty twenty, respectively, the FTA and the State of Oregon increased our threshold for our small acquisition threshold from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so as part of our policy changes and things that we've been reviewing, we'd like to ask for a few things to happen, one of those is that if we could actually have our limit increased from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Let's see, what else, we have some changes to our delegated authority that we've asked to make some changes to also, just to clean up some of the language, all of this has been provided in your packet and should be with following the AIS, that has all of our revisions to our to our policy, and then also to that delegated authority. And the the policy was last approved on September sixteenth of twenty twenty, and those were just some minor changes to clean up language. At that time, we opted not to take back the funding for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Until after we had approval, and I'm going to actually let AJ speak a little bit more clearly on this, as I think she'll be more eloquent than I am, so I apologize, thank you.
No, 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 Wendy, great job for jumping in there, apologies. I'm sure Kalina does not even realize that she's missing the meeting, she has caught a flu cold that she has been tackling and advised us, but we thought she would be well enough, I bet she's going to freak out, so I just want to do those apologies. So when she watches this over, she knows that I fully explained to you that she has been very sick. So in saying that, Wendy is here as the procurement manager and could provide any technical information, but just to walk the board through this, especially those of you on the contract committee. The current authority of the general manager is under a hundred and fifty thousand. So in your board packet, every month, you see a delegated authority report. That tells you everything I have signed under that report. Under the authority that the board has delegated to me. This was something that has been very important to the board over years to be transparent about all the agreements that we're signing within my authority, and then any contract that is above my limit comes to the contract committee. Three board members review the, you know, make sure it's along with the budget, make sure it's for a business purpose, and make sure that they ask all the questions that makes them feel that they are ensuring that this is their fiscal responsibility. And then that comes to approval to you guys, the entire board. Changing this would align with state and federal standards to moving it up to just under two fifty. It would also allow for smoother business processes, as too many small contracts are coming up against, and sometimes the committee meets and only reviews one small contract. It really is probably not an efficient use of everybody's time, we're spending a lot of money in that, you know, wonky area between one fifty and one and two fifty. And knowing that the state and the federal government has already moved their limits a while ago, we waited, it was the pandemic. We were doing virtual meetings, we did not feel that was the appropriate time for people to feel disconnected about our financial. So we waited an entire year, and right now with the transition of the general manager, it appears to be a good time to start fresh and and align ourselves with the state and federal practices, so that's why that's coming before you today. Any questions?
Yeah, if you have questions, please feel free to unmute or raise your hand, whatever you think. Let's go with Susan.
Go ahead, Dawn.
And Emily.
But Susan. Dawn was first, I'm going to let it go.
Oh, okay, Dawn, Susan, Emily support.
This is just on our agenda item summary, and the bullet points in force where it says the purpose and the role of the board. And then it says the LTD Board of Directors is a policy board. And this means that the board's role in this instance is to make policy change. Now, in my recollection, we had this discussion before, I mean, Dwight Purdy was the attorney at that time. And they didn't, he didn't recommend any kind of adjective that declares the role of the board, the role of the board was just that we were the board. And the policy word there didn't have any particular meaning. And well, that was the advice we got then, you know, whether it was five years ago. The policy board was not a meaningful term, that we were just simply the board. And I noticed this in our packet, again, further down in the agenda. Once again, the role of the board is described as a policy board, and I'm just wondering if we need some clarification on that, or everybody happy with that?
I can explain that, Dawn, in this document. I I think just for the purposes of this document, this is language that we actually did with our legal counsel's oversight when it was originally developed. I think the context being used here is that the board would not actually be managing the contracts themselves. So I think it talks more about the policy oversight, ensuring that the district's policies are adhered to. If that's something that doesn't sound right to the board, and that we would, we can just remove that, but I think in that, this context is just related to the role of the board in the oversight of con of of contracts would not be a day-to-day management, we would not go out there and looking at the performance of our contracted services. You would just ensure that, of course, we're adhering to the policy level decisions, but I'm okay, whatever your comfort is in adopting the language.
But the use of that adjective doesn't really change the nature of the board.
It does not.
So I'm feeling we don't need an adjective there, but that's my opinion.
Susan, did you want to go?
Oh, sure, sorry. You know, I'm I am new to this and to the process, so I would like to, you know, have some guidance on some of the the issues, but when you talk about the, because there's several things besides just the extension from one fifty to two fifty. So I feel like the size of the budget of LTD, that a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap is is very reasonable, and that I I fully support that, but what I would like to know is, could there be clarification about what are the safeguards for to ensure compliance with both the the letter of the law and the spirit of the procurements and contracts when it comes to just the related contracts, multiple ones that are dispersed under two hundred and fifty thousand. I just, you know, what are the, you know, what are the safeguards with that process? That as far as it being two hundred and fifty thousand, I'm perfectly good with that, I'd just like to know what is the protections of of the other activities.
That's a great question, and I think in line with the question you have. So, and Wendy, you can maybe give us the threshold on the different levels, and I think Kalina may also have already joined, and she can be moved over. But we, the way we manage our contracts at the various levels have to do directly with our adherence to state and federal requirements. So even though, so what we write in our policy that you have before you adheres to ensuring that at every step we have to maintain the adequate checks and balance, not only of how, what types of terms we choose to use, but to ensure that we have the right number of the correct posting notification, have open competition, and that our standards all adhere to our state and federal requirements. And another level that happens there is that the person who opens a purchase order is not the same person who approves it, it goes through multiple layers, even when we have federal dollars involved. We have to use different checks and balance, additional people, if it has an IT component, there's an IT write-off on it, so what we do is we have a lot of checks and balance, a lot of people involved based on the dollar amount and the type of the procurement and the type of dollars being utilized at every level, so there's a lot, so the document does cover a lot of that. We do have checklist, and every single year, we have an independent auditor that has to sample all of this at the different levels and has to evaluate whether we have followed all of our written procedures and all the procedures that align with the state and federal. Then once every three years, the federal government comes in and does an audit on top of that. And at the last meeting, I did announce that the federal audit was listed no deficiencies, which is very unusual, based on the number of procurements that we do and the amount of regulation that we cover. We did get a perfect audit in all twenty-one areas. We also received a flawless audit, which we hadn't received one of those in a while to in our financials. And that is because we do have these conversations with the board on a regular basis. And you guys are very interested in these areas, just like you are today, so we've been really working to perfect how we ensure that the adequate checks and balance, if you want those dollar amounts, Wendy, maybe perhaps you can turn to the levels, and maybe provide more if there's questions about that. But yeah, it's it's a lot of checks and balances that have to go through, not just the signing of the contract, but even in the opening up the the purchase order or the dispersing of the funds. And in your board packets, you also see all the disbursements, so if we committed to paying somebody, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. All of our disbursements that we submit to you on a monthly basis, you're able to see that, that that vendor got that money. And if we were to add them all up, it would add up to the contract amount or below the contract amount. So we do show that, it's just a lot of moving pieces, like I said.
Thanks, that's really helpful, and congratulations on the the clean audits that you've had. You know, I I would like just some clarification because I'm new to this, but can you give some examples of what is the process with regard to due diligence? How do you select the different people who get a contract, is that, you know, what is that process?
So, so based on, yeah, so based on the different types of procurement, some of them are price only, right? There's a procurement in which it's a goods and services.
Right.
It's for, you know, we have two things identical, we want the best price, so we go for the best price. There's other contracts in which it's based on qualification, like a professional services. We want, today, we talked about that, you know, there's many qualified firms, how do you choose one over another? Past experience, their past record, maybe their ability to already know certain aspects of the district, so they wouldn't double charges for a new vendor, but then there's our formal procurements. Our formal procurements actually go through a posting, a solicitation process, and we can people sign up or companies sign up, vendors sign up, there's an outreach to ensure that even vendors who are not regular bidders nationally can openly compete. So we cannot even restrict our procurement to somebody who's in Eugene, Oregon, and we want them to bid, and that's we want to award. We have to make it competitive nationally, as we're required as a federal grantee. And what I will say is, for the internal checks and balances, I am not involved in those processes. There is a project manager, and there is a rating committee that rates according to the specifications. I, because I'm the one that reports to you and brings it before you in essence. I exclude myself from any rating so that I myself maintain a level of independence and oversight in the day-to-day activities. So know that based on the type of procurement, we choose the appropriate one, and that decision is made by the procurement staff, which Wendy, you're at the procurement manager, and if there's anything you would like to add about how you make those decisions and how you're reporting to Kalina, be it.
Yeah, actually, and thank you so much, we should give you a job in procurement, AJ, because you did a wonderful job helping explain that, so thank you so much. And so, yeah, Susan, it was a great question, and that's, I mean, AJ's pretty much nailed it for us. We just, we go through many levels, the requisitions we have, they're they're vetted out by several people before we even begin a process. We want to make sure we have open competition on those, so as soon as the process comes to us, like what AJ said exactly, is we're doing that vendor outreach, and depending on the dollar threshold. And so kind of what AJ alluded to before, we've got three whole, three three thresholds right now, so we've got up to ten thousand dollars. We can do in a direct award where we basically, you know, have a vendor that we we have utilized in the past, we can award them up to ten thousand dollars in a year without doing open competition, and we still recommend everything is competed no matter what. And then we have between ten thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand, which is where we're approved to right now. And that is basically, we can do multiple quotes, we have, we reach out to multiple vendors to get those quotes. And then from two hundred or two hundred, a hundred and fifty and above, which we're hoping to move to two hundred and fifty, so Freudian slip. But from from a hundred and fifty and above, that's where we have to, AJ talked about that, that solicitation, the formal process that we do. We can do a formal process under a hundred and fifty, it just kind of depends on. It just kind of depends on the type of service we're doing and what it what it warrants at the time. But it, there is a lot of eyes on all of those, as you know, also AJ said, we have the evaluation committees. And we try to get from across the district, not just, you know, obviously one department. And have people that are specialized in 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 aspects of that, and they can help us to determine. You know, i- is that vendor the best choice for us? Um, depending on the type, it can be like, you know, low lowest price, or it could be just best overall proposal. And so for bids, that's that's the lowest price and then proposals, we can take other factors into consideration with our award. Does that, does that help answer?
Yeah, that that's helpful and and. Boy, this is a, this was a big document to read and and I admit that I um sort of was. Blinded at at some point with all of the different um line items, so apologize for the questions, but. So you're saying that open competition is a requirement for most contracts?
Yeah, so really, anything over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to have open competition, and so we, it would be really truly anything over ten thousand, we have to have open competition. It's just the level of that competition. Can we do it with a quoting process? Or do we have to do a formal solicitation, which is where we do it at a hundred and fifty or higher? There is the sole source, which we can have, there are some exclusions to that open competition rule. But we try to only use sole source, kind of this conversation we were having about AJ's, you know, replacement, what firm do we hire and how do we? Hire them, we do try to steer away from sole source just because they are frowned upon and some, you know, they can be looked at as a shortcut. But if there's true justification of why this one source is okay to use. Then that's then that it is permissible, we just use those as like a, you know, last case. You know, worst case scenario, or it's gonna end up, you know, costing way more to solicit something, you know, only one person would be able to respond to anyway.
Okay, so as I read it, it was that there'd be solicitation of at least three proposals. And that um after the award of the contract, there's like seven days for outside comment or for other. Interested parties to comment, so.
Period we can have.
But it, but it's only seven days, correct?
Um, it's up to, you know, no, no less than seven days.
Oh, no less than seven days, okay.
So we can, as long as we, that's the minimum, and so, and just so you see like through the, through the um policy. If you see some language that's bolded and some that's not, that's, we actually take the most restrictive language that we have, and that's. You know, that we try to delineate that with the bolded language and with without. So if it's, we we prefer to stick closer to the, you know, the the more restrictions we have, the the, you know, we prefer to go that way, just to be safe than sorry.
Sure, Wendy, I I mean, that's all really helpful, and I I think your commitment to transparency is is really important for all of us, but. So that brings me to the question of, does hiring the new general counsel fall outside of this process? Or would that have been included in this process?
So, so with the new general counsel, it's within that process, so. For what, for what we, how we set up that contract, it was set up for under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, because we didn't have. Um, I I, you know, we we just needed to get somebody on board quick, so part of the process that we have is available to us is a personal services agreement. And for that, we can do um as, you know, like up to a certain amount. Uh, we can do a direct negotiation, which is um ten thousand dollars. Or if there's needs that are um, you know, immediate and we need to have it turned around, we can do a sole source for that as well, and that's. We did a personal services agreement, but with um, I believe that's with the sole source. Um, backing on that because we needed, the time was of the essence and we needed to have somebody in place. Um, by the the board meeting that week. So the contract, you guys haven't seen that yet, it's on the um AJ's. Um, you know, general manager's delegated authority, so anything that's um that doesn't come before the board. That is reported out each month to the board on her delegated report, uh, authority report. And so that would be one of the contracts that would be on there.
So there, there was no competitive. Opportunity for that.
Um, no, but and it looks like Kalina is actually able to join on now, so if we want to have Kalina, if if um. Camille, if you haven't brought Kalina over, can you, do you mind bringing her over?
And and I will bring her over right now.
Okay, thank you.
And Susan, on that day, if you may recall. Um, what we were able to do is ensure continuous um support of the district through legal services. Although uh we do still have our firm um as on contract. And are sorting through all those uh different uh district legal needs. Um, which is what we're working on. So we did not send any termination of a contract in an absolute. So that still shows in our records as an active contract. But what we did want to do is have an active contract for the board immediately. And make sure that the board uh had legal counsel uh available to them immediately. So um I um spoke with Kalina and said, um, what procurement uh. Uh, is available to me to ensure that I meet that need, and uh she was able to do that. And Kalina, do you want to talk about that procurement?
Yes, and so just for clarification, if you're taking a look at the policy. Um, take a look under personal services uh contracts, and what we did, I think it was maybe two years ago. We um took advantage of um. Something that's in the Oregon revised statute in terms of contracting, that as a um. As an agency, as a public agency, we're able to carve out certain professional services that we would call personal services. As opposed to others, and but for those particular services, we've stated that in many cases, it's not expedient. Uh, to do full and open competition, and that would be things like attorney services, things like audit services, there are certain. Other um specific disciplines within transit. Where we know there's not a lot of people that know how to do that, we went through that some um months ago in terms of um the grant support. So in the relation to the um legal services, legal services is one of those. Professional services that we've delegated as a personal service that um is under this particular exemption under. In our contracting code, in which we don't always have to go out um to have uh open uh competition. Um, but in that case, what we do have to do in order to still um. I'd say answer to the taxpayer and make sure that we are utilizing our funds appropriately. We have to perform what's called a cost analysis, so that is you're doing some market analysis, I'm going to compare the rate. In this particular case, I'm going to compare the rate that that person is providing us with the rates that we currently have and maybe some other rates, so. I'm still not just taking it on face value, I have to always. In particular, because particularly because we receive federal funds, we have to always be able to state that. The price that we're paying for any service or for any good is fair and reasonable. And there's an actual document that, there's a statement that we have to clearly say. Uh, in our files that says, we've performed this analysis and we declare based on one, two, and three. That this price that we're paying for this particular vendor is fair and reasonable. There's also an independent cost estimate that we would attach into that file. That would be formed based on the type of work that we have um had our current firm to utilize. And taking a look at what that budget is, so we've not just assigned a budget to it, but we've looked at the types of work that our current firm is is has um. Done for us, translated that into the rate that the new firm would be. Um, providing so that we have a good idea and substantiation um for the budget and the overall contract. That value that we've assigned to that particular um firm.
Wow, Kalina, that's a lot. But uh again, under the personal services contracting section, which you're saying this falls under. It says there will be solicit- solicitation of at least three proposals, so. I mean, I'm I'm hearing you say that didn't happen, so when no longer um we're working with uh Kristin Denmark and her firm. And you said that you went through your, all the different processes that you said have to happen, so when um. Andrea Coit was hired. All the things that you talked about literally happened in um like a day, correct?
Yes, so we still did not, if you read on down, there's the exemptions section, right, so in that policy, you have. You can do direct negotiation, that's direct appointment, that's under up to ten thousand. For most other things, if you don't have any extenuating circumstances, you can still issue personal services. With a three bid, I can do three bids and that can be calling three people, doesn't have to be a formal solicitation. But I also have um exemptions and and there are certain uh criteria that the state of Oregon has outlined. That um outline what is, what is something where I can say I'm going to exempt this particular thing. Also, for the federal government, they have three subsections in which we have to provide documentation. Um, to say. That the, and one of those things is an unusual and compelling urgency, the unusual and compelling urgency in this case is. To not have a lapse in service in terms of support for the board. Uh, I, and so this is why I will say, I don't know all of the circumstances around it. I received a call from AJ to say, we need this, how can we do that? I go to my policy and I get that done, and yes, we did get it done in probably under a day. Um, quite frankly, um, you just hustle uh for what it is that you need to have done.
Um, I guess.
So I just want to call attention, we're about fifteen minutes, um, let's see, we are about fifteen minutes. Behind where we need to be, we still need to talk about board member committees and assignments, so I think. Um, what we could do is still do a round robin, so everyone still feels like they get a chance to talk. And then if we have additional questions on this, this is a a conversation that we can continue at another time. Um, we can uh, so we're not fully in like, we're, we still have more questions left. But let's go through each board member um to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Does that sound good, you guys? Okay, Dawn, um, why don't you go?
Uh, I appreciate Susan's questions and Kalina's answers, and I'm satisfied with this report.
Thanks, Dawn, Michelle thoughts?
Um, I I I too appreciate Susan's questions and and Kalina explaining and walking us through that. Uh, you know, I know there were some concerns over the situation that that took place, but I think that I'm kind of just. I'm ready to move forward with. Uh, you know, the reset button at this point, so.
Great, Emily?
Lena, thanks for um always answering our questions so well, I know we put you through the wringer not too long ago at one of our contract committee meetings. So thanks for always rehashing this, it's such a confusing um area potentially, so Susan, thanks for the great questions, I think this is a good conversation, thank you everyone.
Thanks, Emily, um, and I'll hop in really quick, Susan, I think we're all appreciative of your questions, so thank you for asking those. Um, and getting some clarifying words, and you will get it, you will get a chance and just.
Yeah, I I have to say, I feel like this is really important, and I think that. I want to be able to, you know, we all have fiduciary responsibility, and I take that very seriously, and I I know everyone else does as well. So I apologize that I'm new and I don't understand all of these things without asking questions, but I feel it's my responsibility to do that. So. One of the, one of the options in this agenda item is that we actually. Don't adopt this tonight, that we put a pause on it, and that's what I would like to move that we do. For the reason that we just, we just approved um Mark to be the new interim. Um, general manager, he's the person that's gonna have to initiate and uh be responsible for this. We have two vacant board seats and I don't understand that that there's any urgency to to do this now, so. I would move that we uh don't adopt this tonight, that we put this off for another time. When we can ask as many questions as we feel we need to ask.
Mark, do you have a response to that?
So you're trying, you want to um put off uh voting on the um. Uh, expanding the authority of the general manager, just that part, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I I'm perfectly comfortable with that part, but there, I mean, when you look at this uh document, my goodness, I think it's how many pages. And so to me, it's just the whole process. Um, when you look at the procurement, it says one of the alternatives is to adopt at a later date. And that's what I'm suggesting, is that we adopt this resolution at a later date. Because we have two empty, empty vacancies on the board. I don't believe that this is so urgent that it has to be voted on tonight. And so that's, that's my, I don't know if it's a motion or a recommendation or certainly. My hope.
Can I just see from other board members, would anyone um be in support of what Susan said?
I don't think it changes anything if we don't adopt it, so if I, if people have reservations, I'm fairly comfortable with that either way.
Dawn, Michelle, what are your thoughts?
Um, you know, I I know that Susan has some pretty um strong feelings and concerns about this issue, and I would like to give. Everyone an opportunity to feel comfortable moving forward, so um, you know, in the interest of time, if we want to move this to another. Meeting, um, you know, where we can allot the the right amount of time for the discussion, I'm I'm fine with that.
And Caitlin, I want to just jump back in and maybe um an opportunity would be to. Come sit in on the contract committee meeting, um, I think that's a really good place to get a sense of how this works and to ask deeper dive questions. Um, so that if it, if or when it does come back, it's a little bit more comfortable for everybody to sort of have time to adjust and consider, so that could be another. Sort of alternative to an additional meeting, if that's helpful for people.
Emily, that was, that was a great cue up because our next um. Topic for the agenda is actually board committee. Uh, or board member committees and assignments, and I actually was going to suggest Susan for the contract committee, because I think those, these have been some really great questions. Um, and. So, great, great cue up for there, well, um, Kalina, do you feel like there's anything else or mark? To, we need to say right now before we table this?
No, I think for tonight, you know, we're good, um, I I think before we bring, I mean, the the. Um, certainly our contracting rules, our procurement rules are complex, I mean, the federal government, the state government, so. To expect a board member really to understand the complexities of that, um, you know, we take years. Learning the complexities of of federal rules, so um if we can understand the expectations of. Uh, you know, Susan and the board on what we can bring to you, so you can better understand how. Um, we operate, then that'd be helpful.
But I I really, I do want to make it clear that I'm as supportive of the um. Increase from a hundred fifty to two fifty, I'm I'm very comfortable with that. It's just all the other documents that I I need to understand better, so I appreciate uh the time to do that.
Caitlin, do you need a motion to table this, or can we just proceed? I don't know what you need from us.
I believe we can proceed, Camille, AJ, does that sound right?
If you don't have, if you don't have a motion on it, this is not an urgent matter, it was just, we were trying to be timely, but. This is something that I think uh with Susan, if she goes on the contract committee, I think this would be very helpful for you guys, so, yeah.
Great, well, thanks for that discussion, Kalina and Wendy, thank you so much for your time, and I would encourage board members. To reach out directly to Mark as well, if you want to get more one-on-one time with one of the directors and learn more about. Um, anything in particular, I just, that's always a great way to get more questions answered and. You know, especially when the topic like this, sometimes it's harder to to kind of comprehend when we're in a Zoom meeting or kind of in a larger format, so. Those resources are absolutely available for all board members, um, just please contact Mark and we'll get that arranged. Um, and we can have two, two board members attend, you know, because why not have the conversation and let's continue our learning on on all of this, so thank you again. To Kalina and Wendy, let's move on to our next agenda item, which Emily nicely queued up for us. Um, so we're gonna talk about board member committees and assignments, so tonight we won't necessarily have approval because. This uh board is really great at um discussing and giving. Um, discussing and giving feedback. So I wanted to give all of you the opportunity. To review the vacancies that exist on the committees and boards and say, hey, man, I really am interested in that one committee. Or there's this other committee that maybe um hasn't been the right fit and I'd love to put more of my time and investment into one. So Susan does contract committee, which we all know she'd be great at. Um. I was kind of hoping some of you would want to self-select. Um, so I wasn't just doing assignments. So I wanted to give you the opportunity. To um see if there's anything that you particularly felt strongly about. And I do wanna make one um quick note, what we do need to do today. Is approve moving strategic planning committee from monthly to quarterly. Um, so we do need to make sure we approve that today, um, so that we can schedule the next one and move on with that. And now that we have our strategic business plan done, we're gonna rework that. A little bit and start moving to quarterly. It'll be a great way to, to make sure we're continuing on the right trajectory. Dawn, you look like you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was kinda reviewing the committees and thinking that, well, I've been serving on Lane Act for many years now. And I feel like, well, a lot of the presentations I get at Lane Act or also get at MPC, but not different. And I'm um feeling like I'd rather go to MPC and get a new person on Lane Act to, who would be the um. Subdistrict one person. And I could serve as an uh, uh, alternate for that to help that person on. But I think I could be more effective on MPC.
Okay, so what I'd ask, I'm not trying to put everyone on the spot right now. But if you have um particular committees you'd be interested on serving, um, please email me, call me, whichever works better for you. Um, and of course, we don't have to fill all the vacancies between the five of us. Um. I'm, I just wanted to um give everyone essentially kinda first pick as we have the opportunity, like AJ mentioned earlier, for this fresh start. Um, so.
Caitlin, I, I will um do the contract committee.
Great.
All the questions I need to, um, and then on the lane council of governments, um, I was the alternate. I. I can go ahead and fill that vacancy, at least until there's new people, so.
That's great. Camille, can you make note of that, please? That's great. Thank you so much, Susan. I think you're gonna be perfect for both of those. So that's great. Um, so I, is there a uh motion already in there to move um strategic planning committee to quarterly?
I'll move to do so.
Uh, no, there is not. Um, you can just uh state a, a simple motion.
Okay, so Dawn, you moved?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second?
A second then.
Thank you, Emily. Um, let's do roll call vote. Emily Seacord?
Hi.
Thank you. Michelle Weber?
Hi, thanks Michelle, Susan. Hi, thanks Susan and Dawn.
Hi.
Perfect. I also though, I said that passes unanimously, um, probably to the relief of our committee members. So thank you, everybody. Um, okay, so I, I probably gonna need to put a deadline on when I could hear back from everyone. So um, if we could just maybe say. Let's just say like a week or so, if everyone could get back to me by August thirteenth. Um, about preference for committees um that I haven't heard from, that would, that would be great. And please feel free to ask questions um in the meantime as well, um, to Mark and I about. Anything else that um is in more detail for that.
Caitlin, do you want us to respond or, or will you send an email that we can respond to saying we're fine with where we're at or we wanna make adjustments or recommendations? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. And um, so I think what I'm gonna do in the interest of time, we're at four forty-two. Sorry, there's a little bit of noise in the background. Um, we are going to um move the update on the service plan. To our September board meeting as a reminder. Um, we don't have an August one since we're all traveling. So Tom, um, if that's okay with you, we would put you um early on the agenda for September. Does that work?
That's fine and we'll have more information to share at that point anyways.
Great. Okay, great. Thanks so much, Tom. We appreciate your flexibility. So the last agenda item right now is going to be um. Officer election. So I do wanna remind everyone um of the roles we play. So I am president. Right now, Don Norden is treasurer, Emily Seacord is secretary. Um, that leaves Michelle and Susan who are not assigned to offices and we do have one vacancy um for vice president. So I wanted to see if there are nominations for a vice president. Okay.
Well, I would take that position.
What was that?
I'll take that position.
Well, we need to move Susan or Michelle and since you are already in a position, Dawn. So my, my recommendation. Um, based on uh. Probably interest and um. Where, where we're looking for time management and skills, I would like to nominate Michelle Weber. If Michelle, that's a nomination you would like to accept.
I would accept that nomination.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. So um that would leave um everyone in their, in their same uh positions and then that would uh bring Michelle into the vacancy. Um, so. Do we just do roll call vote, Camille? Is that correct?
Uh, you actually do not have to vote on this item as the board president, you just a point.
Oh, okay, my mistake then. Um, so Michelle, I would like to appoint you vice president. Is that acceptable for you?
Yes, that is. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, um, that's it for today. I just wanna thank everyone. Really great questions. Um. Just really good discussions. So. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting fifteen minutes early. It is four forty-five and the LTD board directors work session is officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.